Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our January meeting for the Friends of, uh, not Friends, for the Prestige of the Library. And I'll call the meeting to order. And first up on is our parole. Bob, I see you are logged in, is that correct?
I'm here.
You are here. I see Kim is here.
Yep.
And Shawna is here.
Yeah.
And Teresa is not feeling that well today, so she will be home resting. She gets better fast. Okay, so I need to have, first of all, ask if everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from our last meetings, December 1st and December 13th, if I could have a motion to approve those minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I move to approve those minutes. Second?
Okay. Well, in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, and then we'll have an approval of the agenda. I'm going to guess that everyone's had a chance to review the agenda, and are there any additions, corrections, additions to the agenda?
No, I move to approve page on the second.
Hold on, in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you again. All right, so we are on to citizens and comments. Janie, do we have anybody online who'd like or anybody that has any comments to make at this time? They're welcome to do that, and I'll explain if there is, Janie, I will explain to them. You can explain to them the procedure.
If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or send me a message in chat and I will call on you.
Bless you, Shawna.
And is there anyone in chambers that would like to make a comment? Okay, I think we're good.
All right, good, well then we'll move on. All right, so we are ready to go to our reports, and Mark, you are up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, what I wanted to encourage the board today with is an update of a coming, what we're calling the 2024 Community Setup Backing Survey. And I bring this up not because we're going to ask individuals to promote this to throughout the community, because this is going to be a targeted survey that will go to specific individuals that will be randomly selected. What we're asking you all to do as library of Board members, as we are asking all of our Board and Commission members to do, is to just through your spheres of influence, let people know that this is happening for a couple of reasons. One, because it's a random selection, everyone won't be invited to participate. And so for those who are, we want to make sure that they understand that this is a reputable action that the city's taken. It's legitimate, right? It's not coming from a third party that we hired. It's not coming from any other organization that we're partnering with. It's coming from the city, and the results are going to be used to help us keep track of the performance of our strategic plan over the five-year period. And so with that, we will be distributing some letters, preliminary invitation letters, to those folks that are going to be invited probably next week. That will be followed by distribution of the survey itself, which people can take on a, they can take the survey on paper and mail it back to us, or they can take it online. They will be invited to do either one. And then we will be reporting results probably in the second quarter of the year as we finalize that process. So that's really the extent of my report this afternoon. We'll be happy to answer the questions about the survey, the process, the results, any of those kinds of things.
How many people are getting letters that are, and literally?
Approximately 660.
And what percentage are you hoping will respond?
Hoping 100%.
Well, okay, we know that, what would be your, your minimum?
What we need, yeah.
Size, and who would accept this legitimate survey of a community?
Well, we, we would, we would report the results regardless of the number of responses. What we need to make it really fit in the category of statistically significant at the 95% confidence level, at three and a half percent plus or minus, is about 450 responses.
Now I can help get full fill out surveys this room.
Shawna?
Oh, I think I, I think, yeah. One day, we do have that. Oh, I got you.
There we go. All right, Shawna, do you have a question for Mark? So, Mark, did you, again, like, I missed the, the context of the survey?
So the con, the context?
It's a good thing I'm not there. You guys had run out of microphones.
Yeah, there you go. Pick the active microphone. The context of the survey essentially is, within the strategic plan that the Council has adopted, there are 13 key results that are identified in that plan that we are going to use on an annual basis to say, here's how we're performing against this adopted plan. And of those 13, approximately six of them can really only be measured through some kind of survey, because it's, it's asking you questions like, how do you feel about the economy, and specifically your economic opportunities, things like that. And so the survey is designed to get answers to those questions, but then also to get answers to some contextual questions in addition to that, so that we can target certain things that may support those main key results. And so that's the purpose and design of the survey. Got it? So, only one other question, and I'm just curious. I don't, I'm not making any statement, or I'm just curious, how did you arrive at the targeted audience? Who would be the targeted audience? So when you look at, what, what we're trying to achieve is, is making sure that when we look at the results and use the results to make some kind of decision, that we're with reasonable certainty able to say that the results that we get represent the, represent the voice of the community with a 95% confidence. And in order to do that, you start with your, you know, whatever your population is. In this case, we're using households. And so we have approximately 4,800 households in the city. And then when you run the, the statistical calculations on that, you get your sample size, which is where we derive the 660. Yeah. Just curious. Thank you. Sure.
Cool. It'd be fun to watch the results.
Definitely. And, and one of the things I'll say is that this is our baseline year, right? So this is, the, the results, we hope tell us something, but it, well, they will obviously tell us something. We, we hope, though, that the results that we learn this year serve as our baseline that we can compare with in the outputters, right? So really, what we're trying to do is show progress over time. And that's really where the goal ends up being, over the five-year period of the strategic plan.
And will you choose different participants next year?
Yeah, so the, as the number of households changes, you know, increases, that won't have really an impact on the sample size. So the sample size will remain roughly the same, and it will be randomly selected each year. So the odds are that multiple people of that 660 will be the same, but it won't be the same 660 year after year. Yeah.
That's even.
Yeah, interesting. Well, yeah, Friends of the Library also is a, a, a navigate to get that information out and want to know that they might, and that they do, to encourage people, that they know someone to ask questions to encourage them to fill it out. Absolutely. And, and we're going to be doing advertising through our media channels. And so those will be things that you can, as individuals, pick up and share as well. And really, that's the ask, is just making sure that people in the community understand that this is happening, it's a legitimate exercise, and it's important for them to respond.
It will show them on the related Facebook, community Facebook.
Yes, yes.
Google letter. And when are those letters going out?
Our target distribution for those letters is next week, so the week of the 15th.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, so.
You're right, it's on my table.
You gotta be kidding.
Number two. Bites the dust.
There's.
True down.
Oh, boy.
Whoever, because my.
Maybe it's, maybe it's, I'm shabbing the electricity out of the batteries, I don't know. Ah, must be. We'll try, we'll try this one. Yes. Well, this one will work for a little while, we'll see. All right, so we are on to Friends of the Library Report. Bob, you were there, weren't you?
Um, yeah, we don't, we don't have really Friends report since there wasn't a Friends meeting in December.
Oh, that's right.
You know, and last time I reported on the November meeting and the election of officers and the approval of the budget. So there's, the only thing I would report is that I saw Robin sitting there in the audience. But right now, we published the newsletter, put it out on or about the first, I think I went out on the 31st. The main thing is we continue to need more books for the June book sale, and that we are promoting, at least with the newsletter, not only the new, the new officers for the year of 2024, but also promoting having people join, join the Friends. So it's a real short report since we didn't have a meeting. The upcoming meeting, I think, is the end of this month.
Are they doing the Valentine's Day auction? No. Okay.
Uh, no. The question on that is, we're not doing the Valentine's gift basket auction this year. The decision was made to pen that or suspend it, if you will, for this year until we see where we have more room. Because the, the biggest problem with the online auction is getting everything, getting it, you know, publicized and then getting it delivered to everybody. So we suggested last year that we penned that one if we have anything, and there'll maybe be more discussion on that at the January meeting. If we have anything, it might be one or two large items, but the general consensus of the Friends was that we wanted to go back to the ability to display the baskets in the library. And until we get, you know, a feel for what the new space is going to give us, you can't take up that much of the, you know, the public space in the library that you would need for 25 to 30 baskets.
Makes sense.
Got it. And I remiss, I should have said welcome to Robin as our new Friends of the Library resident, and thank you for being here today. So it's good. All right, so now we're on the City Council, and I'll, I'll, I'll try to do my best to give that. It was a short meeting. The, the Council voted on a new pro temp, and that person was Chris Cargill. The, they also approved many appointees to the various committees that we have. I think, I think the two main ones were the student, or the student, the Community Engagement Committee and also the.
Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission, thank you. So I think those were the two that were, there were quite a few appointees. So that was, that was a good thing. And this, no, no, nothing really that stands out. Janie, did I miss anything?
No, it was a library meeting.
Okay, great. So now we are on to, Janie, you're reporting.
Yes, so the first thing I wanted to touch on is, the library is getting its windows replaced beginning January 22nd. So the city has hired a contractor and they're going to do all the library windows and all of the place department windows. So it's a little less than two weeks away. I had a meeting this morning with Brian and the maintenance crew on plans for how to protect the books and how to keep the public out of the areas that they need to be. So we're going to put up a lot of plastic when we do the juvenile section of the library, because that's where a huge chunk of the windows are. So we're going to put up plastic to keep the public out of that area. They're going to be putting drop glass all over various sections of books and some plywood over different sections to protect the books. And then once we do the children's room and the meeting room, obviously, we can just lock the glass doors, and so that will prevent any patients from going into those areas of the library. So we're going to have some disruption over two weeks, but I'm working with staff on, like, when we do the children's room, bringing some books out into other areas of the library so people can still browse for kids' books and that sort of thing. And we'll be moving Storytime into the teen section, but it's just, we're going to get some, we're going to put out some notices to the community letting them know, like, burn in our dust during these two weeks. And I feel really bad for the guys that have to do the windows in January. That's not going to be fun for them. And it might be a little chilly in the library, so I'm sure we won't have as much lingering during those two weeks.
Let's say this was the most inopportune two-week period with the, with the temperatures as they are going to be this next two weeks.
So it's 22nd, so it's almost two weeks away.
Almost two weeks away.
So I'm hoping.
We could be back in the zig seats right then.
Yeah. Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, okay.
I'm like, earlier this winter was a lot more opportunistic weather conditions. So hopefully it goes back, but we'll see. Just for me, I'm like, I also didn't want them to come like in June or in summer reading, because we have such higher traffic. So I'm like, January is a lower traffic time, so it's a good time for that, but not a very warm time. So we're making lots of plans to get everything ready for that. They have said they're going to do it at 1.2 weeks, at 1 week, 1, 1.1 weeks. I'm just planning for two weeks, so that we don't have to move any programs or that sort of thing. So the other thing, let me start sharing my screen, is I wanted to share some year-end stats with you guys.
As you're bringing that up, I stopped in at the holiday party and it looked like there were a lot of kids there, everybody seemed to be like, fun. Your wife, Brad, and her.
Oh, yeah, she's.
Costume.
She had a way of making things fun.
As, as kids were leaving.
Yeah, which made her, which was, what made her a very excellent teacher.
Okay, so I have just, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 stats to share with you. These are our year-end statistics. We'll have our much more in-depth report in June. But let's see, so for physical materials, we ended the year with 25,715. That's roughly 1,200 up from last year. We did order more than just 1,000 books. It's just, we're reading, so we're deleting and replacing with new. But we are up a little bit from last year. I would say we're significantly up with visitors. Last year was almost 51,000, and this year we're at 62,628.
That's a big huge.
So that's a huge jump, like.
Rocket and roll it in the line.
Yeah. And then our meeting room usage.
Your mic just went out.
I hope so did that one, so. We need to, we need to charge the batteries in all of these.
I think, I think we're going to have to pull them at the end and make sure we get them, but.
Yeah. So I swapped already one here. So.
You can roll chairs with the mics.
So number three stat is our meeting room usage. In 2022, our meeting room was open from September to December, so four months, and we had 156. This year, we got up to 382 usages. So these are for people who reserved the study room or people who reserved the meeting room for meetings. So almost 400 over the year.
Is that, that's, so the one number 3D2 is over the year, we're at 56, it's September.
Four months. So I guess you could probably say 156 per quarter, per quarter or per four months. I don't know, that's probably not.
Four months, a third.
Yeah, a third, thank you. For meeting room usage. And then our checkup, checkouts, we broke 100,000. I'm really excited. So last year, let's see, 2022 was 97,926, so basically 98,000. And then this year, almost, we're 107, 107,902, so almost 108,000 checkouts. So that's really great. So.
That's a lot.
That's 11,000 more checkouts a year.
It's, it's actually about 10,000, 9,976.
That'll be, that'll be a little bit of money.
Yeah, I got my calculator in front of me.
Okay.
And then as far as library card holders, last year in 2022, we had 6,229, and this year, we're up to 6,505. I would say we average about 100 library cards a month. It's just that we will go in and purge two or three times a year, people who haven't checked out in two years on the dock. So it's, it's, it's a very, we try to keep it a very accurate number with that, so.
Am I right on that, Bob? It's about 3,000 more.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let you use your numbers. 276, actually.
I'm just giving the best.
So those are my stats for the end of the year.
Anybody have any questions for, for the staff? I, that's fantastic. I mean, it's up in every category, which is pretty, it just says how valuable our library is to our community.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Um, no, that's everything I had for today.
Great. Okay. We're moving right along. Okay, so now we're on to business, and upon our, for the discussion is 2024 policy review. And I think, did you put out to us the?
I'll pull it up on my screen so you can see it. Our public comments at board meetings. So this is our, currently our oldest policy. Let me move these guys over here. At least it looks weird on my screen. So this is our, currently our oldest policy, and it's on public comment at board meetings. It was last updated in May 2019, so it's next up to be revised. I think it's pretty straightforward. It just talks about, so what, if anyone from the public wants to make a comment, what that they, what they need to do. If they're here in person, they fill out a yellow sheet like they do at City Council, so that we have their information, their contact information, and we have on record that they made a comment. The question is directed to the President of the Board. They have a three-minute time limit. They say if they're a city resident or not. If they don't follow the rules and are disruptive, they'll be asked to leave. The Board is not required to answer the comment or take any kind of action at the meeting. If it's something that they want action or to be on the agenda or that sort of thing, it says they have to give 10 days' notice and write it up. So it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if it really needs any changes. What thoughts did you guys have?
Meetings, the, in part of the introduction, the mayor says that, you know, it's not a comment type from the Council, there's no responses. Does that, does that hold true for this Board as well?
Yes.
Shawna and, and other Board members, the only thing I noticed is, I mean, I don't know if it's minor, but, you know, we refer to the Board and then we call the Board Room, but it's really just the meeting room. You know, in number one, where you say you have a signup register, I don't know if you want to change Board to meeting room there?
At first, number one, it says Board Room, City Council.
You're suggesting, Bob, that we change it to the, the meeting room rather than the Board Room, because it's really a space used by a lot of commissions for their reading.
Right, that's, that was my only thought, is we're saying Board a lot, and we really don't, we really don't have a Board Room, if you will.
Yeah, I, I, probably a good clarification.
Okay, Shawna, you should like mix the red lines.
I have one other comment for the Board to consider. At City Council meetings, they have citizen comments before and after. On our agenda, we only have it before. This does not address any placement on our agenda for the citizen comments. I'm wondering if it should. And I'm also wondering if we should probably, I, I kind of like the ability for citizens to comment at the end of the meeting based on what has taken place in the meeting. So I kind of feel like if there's anybody listening into our meeting and hearing what we're discussing and they want to say or comment on anything that we're talking about, we don't offer them that opportunity in our agenda. So I would like us to consider that if it's okay with the rest of the Board members. Oh, no, no.
Okay, yeah, well, we're out of mics. I want to talk really loud. It, it says in here that any member may address the Board during a public comment period. So it doesn't mean there's only one public, well, I guess it's ambiguous. It could be, we can just take the A up during public comment period.
Yeah, we can put period, parentheses, S in parentheses, and then we can do on the agenda whatever we want.
My only question is, in our bylaws, it outlines what our agenda looks like.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I, so I don't think we have to change anything.
We can't change, here has been done in bylaws, is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I don't know.
I think the bylaws is like, this is what the minimum agenda is. I, I also have, at the top, it says all topics for discussion must be on the agenda, but I have a question about that, because if we ever have a new business or a new topic, does that mean we can't discuss it?
I think we can amend the agenda to add something, like, you know, at the beginning when we're at.
I was going to say, I think that we have the ability to amend the agenda at the beginning of the, so we can add any to the agenda, which allows a citizen to comment or someone outside to comment. But do we need to? Does it have to be on there? Can we just make that decision ourselves and put it out at the bottom, that we're going to allow citizens to comment? I, I, we made that, the Chair, I think it gives the Chair an option to do that, allow, allow the person last meeting to make a comment at the end of the meeting. allow, uh, allow the person last meeting to make a comment at the end of the meeting. So I'm wondering if that's the way we wanna continue or if there should be some formal thing about, I don't know.
I don't think, um, adding it to the end of the, the agenda is a problem. We rarely get public comments anyway, but in the instances where we do get public comment, it's generally about something that the community really cares about. And so providing that opportunity is, is just makes everything more open and and transparent and public. Yeah, welcoming.
Yeah, I would agree with Shawna, I think adding additional public comment is just giving more opportunity. I'd be more concerned if we were like trying to get it away, so.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to change the bylaws.
Well, we don't have to change anything here or in the bylaws to make that happen.
No, I could take up during a public comment period and just say during public comment period.
Got it. And then.
We can have multiple periods.
We can have whole periods, got it.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I, I, I like that idea.
So, so far, there's only two amendments, removing the A before public comment period and changing, um, boardroom to meeting room.
Correct. Anybody have any other changes they would wish to see in that? All right, so, uh, going forward, we need to provide a document for the city council to view and a redline version of this, um, document, uh, to be presented to them for their approval.
Yes, do we wanna?
After our approval. So we'll have to wait for our, our next meeting to see the, the final, um.
My thought would be, um, it's January now, um, in March at our quarterly report, um, when we do our presentation, we talk about this. And it's just something where I will give to Kelsey the red line and the new version, um, for the agenda packet. So then we'll have both of those.
Got it.
As we talk about it with them so that they can physically see it.
And then after that.
Yes.
Right. Got it, I, that, that sounds like a good, good procedure.
Yeah.
If, uh, if we have another one that reviewed, it could also go into that quarterly report, so they might see two possible. Got it, that sounds like a, a good procedure, Paul.
I just thought that was a good timeframe unless we feel like it's, if there were a situation where we wanted to get it more time-sensitive, we could do more reports. But my thought would just be every three months, we present anything that we have changed. Unless there isn't any, any changes then during the meeting.
I agree. Anyone else agree with that?
So I speak to me.
Okay.
I agree.
So I will, um, let's see, so Shawna can send the red lines out, um, and then we'll put this on our agenda for the next meeting. And I will include the red lines in our agenda so that the public has access to it before the meeting.
Correct.
And then I guess if, we'll vote on it and it'll, after it's approved, then we'll go to the quarterly meeting, or to the council.
Okay. Um, we're good. All right. So, um, anyone have any other comments before we, I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting? What's it like down there, Bob?
Um, it's about, uh, according to my phone, it's fifty-five degrees and the sun is out.
Oh, that's pretty good.
So it's, uh, uh, it's been chilly at night and coming down, we got a lot of, we picked up a lot of snow and stuff in Utah and, and, you know, the high, you know, high desert and stuff, but it's, uh, the sun is out, that's the main thing.
That's, uh, yeah, that's it.
Where are you bringing them up?
Um, actually northeast of Tucson, uh, between Tucson, Catalina and, uh, Oracle.
Got it. Well, enjoy your stay down there, we'll, uh, we'll look forward to your, uh, zooming in again in a month. Yes, Jenny?
Um, so our next meeting is set for February fourteenth, Valentine's Day.
Right.
Does anyone have any conflicts with that day? At one in the afternoon? I just want the double time to be. I'm like, maybe people have evening plans, but maybe not afternoon.
But is that a special day?
Okay, so we're good with that, Nicky?
The fourteen.
Great.
All right. All right, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay. All right, I'm going to then adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here and we'll see you next month.